We have a couple more chairs up here. You're welcome to take them. Okay, come in. Good evening. And welcome to the regular meeting of the Madera City Council. Today is Wednesday, July 17th, 2024. It is now 6:00 PM. I want to welcome you all to the Madera City Council meeting. Special day today. The Madera City Council meetings are open to the public. This meeting will also be available for public viewing and participation through Zoom. Members of the public may also observe the live stream meeting on the city's website at www.madera.gov/live. Members of the public may comment on agenda items at the meeting or remotely through an electronic meeting via phone by dialing 669-900-6833, enter ID 858-5396-8960 hashtag. Comments will also be accepted via email at citycouncilpubliccomment@madera.gov or by regular mail at 205 West Fourth Street, Madera, California, 93637. I hereby call this meeting to order. Alicia, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Protem Gallegos.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez is absent. Councilmember Montes.
Here.
Councilmember Evans is absent. Councilmember Mejia.
Here.
And Councilmember Vegas.
Here.
Thank you, Alicia. Would you all please rise for the invocation led tonight by Brandon Hopkins of Grace Community Church?
Lord, we thank you for our time together tonight. We thank you for the city council and their desire to do what is best for the residents of Madera County. Lord, we thank you that you have blessed us and our city with the police department who desires to protect, to serve, the fire department who desires to protect and serve. And Lord, we ask that as residents of this city and of this county that we would be men and women and children who desire to abide by the rules not only that are established by our city and state and federal government, but also the rules that are established by you. Lord, we ask that the city council would be wise tonight, that they would make wise decisions, that they would be encouraging to the city, to the residents, that they would seek to do what is best for the city, that their hearts would be turned to you and toward this city. And we ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Tonight, we'll have the flag salute led by Councilmember Mejia.
Ready? Salute. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, founded in the small, the little region just along.
We still have three seats here available for anyone who would like to have it. We now move on to the approval of the agenda. I'll ask my colleagues for any questions or changes they would like to make. Otherwise, approve the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve the agenda by Councilmember Montes, seconded by Mayor Protem Gallegos. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Agenda approved. Pam, would you like to join me? And anyone else that you would like to have? I've had better days. I'd like to congratulate Madera for having in our local on Saturday, starting on Saturday, the 2024 Little League Northern California State Tournament. This is a very big deal for the city. We welcome all the hard work that you as parents have put in, the staff, and also for the children who had played and made this happen. If it wasn't for you guys, we wouldn't have this tournament. So in recognition, I have a proclamation here that I'll be giving to Pam here. Whereas the Little League Northern California State Tournament represents a significant event in our community, bringing together young athletes, families, and supporters from across Northern California to celebrate the spirit of teamwork, sportsmanship, and athletic excellence. I'm not going to read the whole thing. It's kind of long. Signed this 17th day of July, 2024, Santos Garcia, Mayor of the City of Madera. What do you guys decide? Somebody has to say something. This is your chance. Absolutely.
Looks like this is a Little League meeting. Because I just want to say, this would have been impossible if it wouldn't be for everybody's effort. It wasn't just mine. It's everybody's effort, National League, District, and all of you. I mean, I feel like this is what community is all about. Work hard, yes, definitely. I went to sleep at 2:30 last night, getting things, tying down some things, and have been at work, went home, took a shower, came here. But I just wanted to say that it is a hard work that takes us to this level. I just also want to present this team that is going to represent Madera in our state tournament. We were not sure on this till Sunday. So that is yay Madera, go Madera. And I just want to know that this is, we can take it to any level we want, as long as you guys go there and play with your heart and let's lift up. It's not a Little League anymore. It's Town of Madera. And I need everybody to show up to every game and everything. We need to show support to our guests. And I really want to, it's not just me. I have my board members here. I have National League President Chris Shetler, his board here. I have district administrator here. It's a teamwork. It is not, this is not Little League anymore. It is at the district level. So I'm glad that we all work together to make it to the point where it's at right now. I honestly cannot, cannot, and couldn't have done this without you guys. And I want to really especially thank a few people. One is City Manager Arnaldo, very easy to talk to when I talked to him, and I knew things were good done. Parks and Recreation, Fernando, and also Public Works and the whole city council here. And I really, bottom of my heart, thank you for making this possible for us. And this is a Little League, and I want everybody that's coming here to see, this is a baseball, and we need to continue on taking it on for our kids. Because social media is taking away from everything right now. And it just, we need to put more hard work. Who has time today? Nobody. I make time. Every single day I wake up and I say, I need to do some public work. I need to do some volunteers. And everybody should have same attitude. And we can take these kids all the way to William Court if we all put the effort. And that's my goal. Thank you.
My name is Barry Jenkins. I'm the district administrator for District 10. Little League is the world's largest youth leadership program. Everyone thinks it's a baseball program. It's leadership. Through baseball, we teach the lessons of life, of volunteerism, from the umpires to the coaches to the board, to the city involvement. So to tell you how special these young men are, and I'd like you to stand up and please take your hats off when you're inside, part of leadership. Six weeks ago, through the nation, local leagues selected all-star players to represent their leagues, their communities. In Northern California, we're District 10, which spans from Chauchilla to Salma and our friends up in Oakhurst. They won our district tournament. We are part of Section 7, which runs all the way down to Bakersfield. That's how big we are, and that's what these kids are representing. So six weeks ago, not only did we select 350 teams in Northern California, we started district play through section play, and we are down to seven teams. And Madera American has won a seven. I told that to them on the field. And that's why we do what we do. From a community, I'm so impressed with the city of Madera and what you guys have done to the field and the improvements. We last hosted within the district in Fresno in 2016. It doesn't come around very often, and we try and do it right. It's memories for these kids. That's what it's all about. So please come out. You're going to see some really, really good baseball from seven teams from here to Oregon. And the winner, you'll get to watch, whoever it is, gets to go to San Bernardino, and they are on ESPN. So I want to congratulate these kids for the hard work they put in. Play well, represent Madera well, and have a great time and just enjoy the whole weekend. Okay? Congratulations. And thank you, guys, so very much. So much you guys.
My name is Chris Shetler. I'm currently president of Madera Little League. I just want to thank the city council for the effort they put in behind the scenes that the Parks Department put in in front of the scenes. I know you guys backed them to get that done. Especially Arnaldo. I've talked to him three times. The first time was like at midnight here, because I guess he doesn't leave. I do appreciate his hard work and effort he puts into his community. And like I said, I've lived in this community for 35 years. I've never seen that park as good as it looks today. And there will be more people, I hope, at that park this weekend, playing and recognizing the hard work and what Madera looks like. And what we should recognize is, when Madera works together, we can do things like this, but only together. So again, I think city councils, thank Hector Clemente, all the parks workers, and Arnaldo leading that, and then Fernando. I thank you too, because I know you're somewhere there. You know, his new hire, right? So I appreciate that. And thank you, Mayor.
Well, one other thing is a memento. I see Chris beat me to it, handing out the state pins. You guys are the first people to receive a state pin. Okay? So I'd also include the section and our section in our district pin. If you have any Yankee fans, I might be able to get you to that. Oh, absolutely. Get the kids up there.
Yeah.
Guys, show the banner.
Try to get in the banner. It's impossible.
Of course, we have the banner. Yes, we have the banner.
A little bit more, Councilmember Vegas, a little. Should be like, you should come out and come up inside too, towards the. One more over. One more over. Yep.
My name is.
Vegas. Come toward Councilmember Vegas at the very end over here.
Oh, one of the coach.
Can you see the front portion?
Somewhere we can see you.
One more. One, two, three.
I know, and the one behind Elsa is not showing. Or is that one of the kids?
One is.
Mommy's in here.
Hold it back and higher, guys.
That's advantage trying to be tall. Shoulders back, Pam. Shoulders back.
Like this way.
Okay. Ready? One, two, three.
Guys, can you guys stay here just a little bit? There you go. Where's, where's the camera? Do you want to take one just with us? To the side. Take it to the side. That works.
Everybody turn sideways.
Sideways. Sideways. This way? Want to get in?
Arnaldo, you're getting extra love.
All right. Mayor, thank you so much.
It's a pleasure.
See you guys on Saturday. Have a good one. I think you wanted to say something.
Yeah, before everybody leaves, oh, sorry, nice. My name's Scott Varela. I've been with Madera Little League for 28 straight seasons. My family's been involved with Madera American since the 1950s. Sorry, by my great uncle Cecil Cox, who passed away of cancer in 1973, which is in that city championship trophy is in his honor. Just wanted to speak out, where we're standing here today was the original spot where Madera American used to play here, on this spot here. If you're a true Maderan, you know that. So eventually, they were going to build a city hall here. So that's what we have Lion Town and Country Park now, sometime about the mid 50s. People like Cardi Farias was a true pioneer of Little League baseball. I know he'd be proud to be here today, but I just want to thank the community for having this league here for 70-plus years. I've been able to maintain the fields with my family, my brother, my uncles, my dad, with my cousins. I've umpired out here now for 28 straight seasons for the district. As our district minister said, Barry Jenkins, if it wasn't for people in our community like Fuji Oliver, Cardi Farias, people like Jerry Neal, Joe Flores, which the Madera High Floor gym is named after. If it wasn't for those guys in front of me, my brother, my dad, my cousins, I wouldn't be here today. And I just want to thank all you Little Leaguers. I come out there every single year to umpire, coach, and give you guys support. And I just want to thank all the years of working on the fields for nice end. But I want to thank the city of Madera for everything that you guys have done and everything that you guys have done this season. Little League has Madera roots, and as far as Cardi Farias goes, even Mayor Santos's sons played for Cardi Farias on Papa Murphy's back in the 1990s and 2000s. Our Madera roots grow deep, and we're very thankful to continue to have this place that we have called Lion Town and Country Park to play to this day. And I'm very thankful for that, for the community. And I'm very thankful for the kids. Go out there. As I told you guys before, this is once in a chance in a lifetime deal. Go out there, have fun, and give it all you guys have. And thank you to the community of Madera. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
That's it for youth, unless you want to stick around and listen about sewers and water and, you know?
Thank you, everyone.
I'll give you a minute, so if you're going to take your team out.
Thank you all.
Team picture outside. Adios.
Good luck.
Saturday.
I got other people for that. And then everybody goes, oh.
Yes, Montez is in the back.
All righty. Well, that was great. We now move on to public comment. The first 15 minutes of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked but are not required to identify themselves and state the subject of their comments. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of asking the speaker to hold the comment until that item is called. Comments on items listed as a public hearing on the agenda should be held until the hearing is open. The council is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusion should be drawn if the council does not respond to public comment at this time. Do we have any members of the public commission to speak under public comment?
Good afternoon. I'm Jasmine Guzman. I'm from Madera Coalition for Community Justice. I am one of their project coordinators, specifically the project coordinator for the first ever Madera Pride, which just happened in June. We wanted to take today to come out and thank all of you personally and actually bring you a certificate of recognition to the city of Madera for having been so supportive and such a big historical thing for Madera that we've never had before, and that we were really lucky to have the opportunity to be able to provide the community. It was a very peaceful event. It was a very good event. We saw a lot of members of the community happy to have felt seen on a day that we are just happy that it happened and that we can create a tradition from here on out. And again, we just want to thank you and thank you for having provided us the support that we needed in order to make that a reality. So we humbly bring our little certificate of recognition to you.
City Council. Thank you.
Ready? One, two, and three. Thank you. Great event.
Next year.
Thank you. Two more.
Senator. I don't know. I got.
Sure.
Is there anybody else in the audience with any public comment?
Hello, my name is Alex Hernandez. I'm currently interested in asking the city council if there is a plan in place for what might happen if Proposition 33 is passed. Proposition 33 would switch the rental control from the state to city slash and/or county. So I'm very curious to see what plan they have in place for this. Rent keeps going up all across the state, not just in Madera, but all across the state, and it's getting very hard for people who are looking to move into their first place, whether it's an apartment or eventually moving into a house. So that's just my comment. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. City Clerk Gonzalez, do we have any public comment online?
We have none.
Or on Zoom? Okay, thank you. With that, I close public comment. Moving on to our public hearing, A, A1, public hearing in consideration of a resolution confirming the diagram and assessments for the annual levy of city water landscaping and lighting assessment districts, known as the LMZs. I assist Nicole tonight. Yes, ma'am, it is. Okay, Nicole.
Jay, Mayor Protem, before we go on, just wanted to reflect for the record that the mayor is now absent at 6:25 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me go ahead and share my screen with you. Okay, you should see my PowerPoint. Yes. So, good evening, Mayor Protem and council. This is the second of two meetings for the annual landscape maintenance district engineers report for fiscal year 2425. Recall about a month ago, we had our first meeting, which essentially sets tonight as the public hearing and allows the public to make comments, or if they have any questions about the LMD program. Just a brief history of the engineers report. It's prepared on an annual basis. It incorporates past expenses and revenue, projected expenses and revenues, and it makes recommendations on adjustments to assessments based on the data provided by the finance department that's populated in the city's accounting system, which is Munis. The recommended action is to conduct a public hearing and receive any public comment, and then adopt the resolution to confirm the diagram and assessment as set forth in the engineers report. Levy the assessment is set forth in the engineers report, and authorize the city clerk to file the engineers report with the Madera County assessors and auditor's office. That's actually a nice brief presentation. I will open it up to any questions or comments. Thank you for that report. I turn it over to my fellow colleagues. Any questions? If not, I open up for public comment. Anyone in the house? Online? Or Zoom? We have none. Okay. With that, I bring it back for a motion.
Some move to approve A1 as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Oh.
So sorry to interrupt. I was looking your way, but you're busy, so.
Just so you know, the Fresno County Recorder has set new recording standards for these LLMD levies, and they don't allow, even though it's Fresno, they're not allowing the engineers reports to be filed anymore. So as part of your motion, and I don't think it's going to happen in Madera, but just in case it does, would it be okay to amend your motion to grant staff authorization that if they won't accept the engineers report, that they will accept the list that's in the engineers report with the APNs and the amounts for recording?
Okay.
Okay, so amend the motion to allow staff to submit a list if the engineers report is not accepted.
Right. So what that means is if the resolution, we'll give the resolution that goes out tonight, for some reason is rejected, the updated resolution will be put on there with just, just the assessment list on there that's consistent with the engineers report, and the engineers report will not be attached.
Got it. So a motion has been amended and a.
Got it. So a motion has been amended and a.
Second.
Second, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the consent calendar, matters listed under the consent counter are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, a member of the public or a member of the council. May request an item be removed from the consent calendar and will be considered separately. Do my colleagues have anything they'd like to pull? Consent calendar? I open that up for public comment? Anything on Zoom or email?
We have none.
Are you sure? Back there, no comment? Okay, with that, I close public comments. Moving on, C workshops, C1.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Consent calendar.
My second.
Okay, I have a first and a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Councilman Montez, keeping me on task. C workshops, C1 Westbury Bridge, Streetlight and Bridge. I say who in this is Keith? This city engineer.
Actually, actually, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Proton. Actually, that will be Steve Benicourt tonight.
Right, Mr. Benicourt.
Good evening, Mayor Proton and some Madera City Council. Let me share my screen. Can everybody see see this okay?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Steve Benicourt. I'm the senior civil and the engineering partner for the city. Tonight I've got a presentation regarding some items on the Westbury Bridge. It's specifically street lighting and bridge facade workshop.
Excuse me, Steve?
Yes.
Because Ronaldo, your PowerPoint is not shown on display mode. Would you mind putting it on display so the entire screen could be seen?
Not sure how to do that here. Somebody help me.
So. If if you're in the office, I'm not too sure if you're in the office or you're at home right now. I'm having a hard time telling, but there's a little. It should be where it says. Where I was going to point to a button, but you can't see my mouse, Steve. So it does not help you. Are you in the office, Steve, or are you working from home?
I'm at home.
Steve, if you press Alt F5, it should convert it immediately to display.
Thanks. Well, that's what I was gonna say.
Is that working?
No, it didn't work though.
You know, Steve, go ahead and continue. Come with the listing setup. That's fine. Thank you.
On the on the menu, go to slideshow and then start from beginning. Go to the. Far left now. There you go.
Smaller.
It's smaller, right? That's not.
It's the it's the wrong view.
So that's fine, Steve. Can just continue like this.
Okay, my apologies. This is regarding the Westbury Bridge Street Lighting and Bridge Facade Workshop. Just a little bit of background, on August 3rd, 2022, City Council Council approved a $1,250,000 engineering design contract. With Cornerstone Engineering Group, Cornerstone, for the engineering design of the Westbury Bridge. Cornerstone Engineering Group recently prepared a 65 progress set of plans, specification and a construction estimate. They are proceeding towards 90% progress completion milestone, which should be completed in a few months. Funding for the construction of the Westbury Bridge is unknown at this time, but anticipated funds include measure T if extended by voters. A little bit of context, city city controls six bridges across Fresno, not including State Route 99 and the railroad. Synopsis of the design is it's basically a four lane road, 92 foot wide bridge, pedestrian walkways on both sides. Bike lanes and a 12 inch water main will be attached to the western side. And there will be lighting provided across the bridge. Here's a brief map. Showing of the area. The estimated construction cost is approximately $16 million in $2026 as projected ahead. Cornerstone has requested input on the street light type and any bridge facade architectural elements. The city standard street lights published in city standard ST-20 are included in the 65% bridge design. That's a bare minimum. The current bridge facade design is an untextured flat concrete surface with no enhancements. Staff is cognizant that funding is a challenge, thus the bridge design is utilitarian. Summary, the bridge's width is 92 feet and the length is approximately 400 feet, a little bit over 400 feet. The bridge is designed to accommodate four travel lanes, bike lanes and nine foot wide sidewalks. A 12 inch water main is proposed to be attached to the west side of the bridge. As part of the city's review process, staff is requesting council guidance. On any desired upgrades to the street light type and any added architectural facade treatments. The purpose of this presentation is present options to the council so a determination can be made at a future council meeting. Street lighting from the street lighting portion, there are six street lights planned for the bridge. Each light standard costs approximately $10,000 installed. This cost is included in the current construction cost estimate. Alternate decorative street lights can be incorporated for additional cost of 15 to 20, it's 15 to $65,000 per fixture. For six fixtures, it can use to increase the cost from $90,000 to $390,000. The following are examples of alternate street lights. Now, I'll pause here for a moment. I'll mention that the upper photo. That that light pendant is similar to what was approved for the Yosemite Avenue Project downtown. And these slides are also in the staff report. The other element that Cornerstone would like some guidance on is the current design has an untextured flat concrete surface with no enhancements. The east side facade of the bridge will be the most visible. The west side facade will be partially covered with a water main attachment. Alternate textured, uncolored facade architectural treatment can be can add an additional cost of $48,000 per side. Colored textured architectural treatment can add an additional $60,000 per side. That's in addition to the $48,000. The following are examples of alternate architectural facade treatments. The top one's a Snore Avenue Bridge. The inlaid part is the part that we're referring to that would be could be enhanced. Right below it is a recently constructed Oakhurst Crosstown Bridge. Now, the way these are done is there there is like a mold, a concrete form liner that's put in when they pour the concrete to create the texture. If color is to be added, then of course that's additional cost, but that that is when that is done. So basically you have a little bit of an unlimited type of texture that you could put on. Now, the top one is the Fourth Street and Highway 99 over crossing. And the bottom one is at another location. It's just like a fluted type of texture. Now, there's another one, just to give some variation of maybe what would we want. Another one is the. The flow, it looks like. Kind of symbolic of the river. And if all you wanted was just to paint it, which means there's a maintenance over a period of time, otherwise it fades. Then that's 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 one. That's 13th Street and Highway 99 over crossing. Recommendation, request council review the street light alternatives and facade architectural treatments, which can be discussed further at a future council meetings. That concludes my presentation. If anybody has any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Benicourt, for that great report. I bring it back to my colleagues for. Any conversation or concerns or some recommendations for the lights and the form liner, Councilman Montez.
Yeah, thanks, Steve, for that presentation. I'm just curious on. What type of lighting would increase the cost by $65,000 per unit?
Well, the photos that are shown, those are more decorative ornamental type lighting. They're simply just more expensive to make. And they're not a common standard. So.
The ones that would match the downtown selection that we made, those are going to be $65,000 per?
No, in fact, I don't know what that cost would be. I don't have that information per light.
I was just, I guess I was just.
I can follow up with that if you'd like.
I'm sorry. Yeah. So but for me, I would I would like to match the the lighting selection that we had for downtown. And so and my preference on facade would be a textured uncolored. Because it would be nicer to have some texture, but my concern if it's this colored, especially like stones, is graffiti. Because when we go and we paint over the graffiti, I don't know how difficult it's going to be to match the, you know, the stone texture and color and everything. I mean, the texture, I guess, wouldn't wouldn't matter, but the color. So let me see, in our report, it would be. The the one that you described as mimicking water. So it has a line, but it has a little bit of texture. That would be that would be mine, the wavy, yeah, the wave.
Wave one.
But textured textured uncolor would be my preference to have some, you know, aesthetic design, but also. Understanding that we may have to paint over some graffiti at some point.
That's all, Councilman? Thank you, Councilwoman Mejia.
Thank you for the presentation. I am wondering if the city has some general guidelines for all of these. Like street furniture for it to be consistent throughout the city?
For bridge facade, I don't know of any. I think for anything else, I'll defer to Keith on that. Keith Ronaldo.
Thank you. If you like Ronaldo, I can jump in.
Sure, please do.
The the Fourth Street Bridge, which is just outside from City Hall. That was envisioned at the time that that might become the standard for for the city. There hasn't been a second bridge since that went in, but that wasn't that was the that was envisioned as a standard. I I think we may want to go ahead and find out whether there was any graffiti placed on that one. It's. If it hasn't, it might be a little bit odd that there hadn't been any, but it might also be an indication that. The graffiti artists are somehow respecting that. If it if it were graffitied, it could be that it could be sand blasted. That's actually a stain that's placed on the stone. It's not it's not a paint. But those are things that we can probably check into, you know, with regard to the stain, how deep does the stain go? I don't know that answer.
So the the stone look on Fourth Street, that's my regular exit. I haven't seen it vandalized and I think it's really pretty, but I don't know. Whether or how often people would be able to see under the that bridge. I don't know how much traffic there is under that. But I would really like to know if we have something that is uniform throughout the city at some point.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mejia. Is that all? I opened it up to public comment. Anybody in the audience? Anything like to share? If not, is there anybody online or on Zoom?
We have none. Thank you.
Okay, I bring it back to my colleagues. Do we need a motion or just for that? Sure.
Actually, I do have another.
I think you got two suggestions, right?
You can do motions or you can do suggestions. Problem is that the suggestions aren't consistent. It's going to be confusing for staff.
Councilwoman Mejia has a question.
Yeah, I. My question is, what is the price difference between those two suggestions?
So can we bring that to staff to come with a graph of pricing for stone versus wave? And how much the lighting is? Because I don't recall, I think it was 12,000 for downtown lighting. I'm not real sure. If we maybe have a handle on the cost and we were more apt to say what we would want to put that in a motion?
We could do that.
Is that is that clear direction, Mr. Benicourt? All right, City Manager Rodriguez? Okay, thumbs up. All right, moving on. To D petition bids, resolution ordinance and agreements, D1. Update on our 2020 emergency repair on Avenue 13 sewer trunk main failure. And that is tonight?
That is Keith.
All right.
Thank you very much, Mayor Proton. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and give this a shot and see how it works.
Okay.
How's that working?
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, this item is the update on the emergency repairs to Avenue 13 sewer main and continue a finding of emergency relating to response and repairs. Necessitating the emergency contracts. Yeah, it's not quite working the way I like, so I'll hit the mouse. Following the July 3rd, 2024 council meeting, we have an update for since that time. Floyd Johnston, which I'll call FJC or intermittently Floyd Johnston Construction. Moved to operation, moved their operations to replacement of 42 inch pipe, the June 3rd Mission Bell collapse site. They were they were moving forward with that and attempted to go ahead and find. Couple solid pieces of the existing pipe to connect to to the east and to the west. They were able to go ahead and make a good connection to the to the west. However. As they were trying to find a solid connection to the west, the pipe just kept breaking as they moved further for the west. So ultimately, the contractor made a recommendation that we look at installing a sleeve inside the. The pipe that is at that location. That that turned out to be something that they've that they've done before. The recommendation was for a 20 foot long steel sleeve or whatever we could get into the pipe. And put that in there and that would that would take the load off of the or it would take the load if the pipe. If the existing pipe started to crumble some more. So that was determined to go ahead on that. Well, actually, that was yesterday, I believe. And as of today, that is in place. I'll go ahead and show a couple of photos of that coming up. Also, the CIPP lining contractor, SAC, has completed a long term bypass pump system for the lining project from Nutrien to Road 24. And then the Rain for Rent pumping system that was out there from the beginning, that has been terminated and they've moved completely offside. This is a picture of the Mission Bell area with the with the equipment out there and the protection for the trench. Look at this. I've got a couple of photos in here. The photo on the lower end, kind of long and skinny there because I want you to be able to go ahead and see the. The sleeve. That's a 20 foot long piece of about 42 inch sleeve. And it's sitting outside of the existing pipe, which sits to the right. You can see that pipe is looks kind of solid on top, but as you move down there, you'll see that there really all that's left is just the rebar. That you see a piece of fabric cabling coming down. The excavator is holding the pipe in place while the. Two of the construction workers are getting ready to push that sleeve into the pipe. When you move to the upper right, that's the that's the existing pipe with the sleeve pushed in. Looks to be like 18 feet into the into the pipe or into the existing sewer pipe. To the left side, this is the the sleeve in between the existing pipe to the left. And a piece of brand new pipe to the right. They've got rebar going around that. They're getting ready to put. Concrete slurry around there to completely seal off that connection and that that slurry is seen to the right. Moving on with with the update here. The estimated cost for the emergency thus far is about $2.5 million. That's the FJC emergency response and the repair of the pipeline at both locations. Nutrien at Mission Bell, the Rain for Rent bypass pumping, the traffic patrol estimate as we. patrol estimate as we've got right now, and then other services that included video inspection, geotechnical engineering, other support trades such as the additional vector truck services. The update since the last meeting, the full bypass in place, the full bypass running from Granada all the way up to Road 24 is in place. That was completed on July 8. They cleaned and camered the first shot of the, of the pipe lining. And they installed the first shot on Wednesday night of last week. Procuring, cutout and final TV CCTV inspection did occur last Friday night. And from there, they're going to move west and continue cleaning and CCTV the next shots. And just as a reminder, a shot represents a section of pipe that they're, that they plan to line or that they have lined. This is a picture of their truck where they are able to go ahead and do the video from inside and see what's happening in there. You'll see on the screen, I think that's a, a plan profile showing the plans on the left screen and then the interior of the pipe on the right screen. And then you'll just see the, the, the equipment parked out on Pecan Avenue there on, on the right picture within the slide itself. This is a truck with the liner in there. I believe they call that a sock. That's getting ready to go in. On the right side, they are in fact pushing the sock, the sock into the sewer line. They'll continue to push that through until they get to the end of the, of the shot. To the left side of this, this is the setup where they're able to go ahead and push hot water through the piping, through the sewer system. They're filling up a 42 inch pipe, sewer pipe for the length of the shot. On the right side, this is a, I believe that was a measuring device to go ahead and check out the temperature of what's happening there. Down below the sock, when it's all the way in, should be sticking out into that manhole. And then this is just a before and after of, of a piece of sewer line. On the left side, you see the sewer pipe. As a set, what you see is, I think, going to be the ribs of the rebar through there as well as aggregate. On the right side, you see the PVC after it's been put in the pipe and cured. Projected activities until the next update. They're going to be restoring the roadway at the emergency sections. That's the Nutrien site and the Mission Bell site. They're going to continue the nighttime cleaning. That's going to go all the way up to Road 24 and then the, the next shots are going to occur on Friday, August 2 and Tuesday, August 6. At present, the schedule I looked at yesterday showed that they anticipate the project being done by early November. The recommended action for tonight is to receive an update on the emergency repairs, adopt a resolution with noted corrections, ratifying and continuing a finding of emergency relating to emergency response and repairs to the sanitary sewer main pursuant to Public Contract Code, Section 22050. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I do have another slide to show if you'd like to go ahead and show where the, the shots did occur.
Yes, please.
That would be this here. This is actually going between Granada and Road 24. The first shot you see is fairly short. The next two shots will be about twice as long. Once they get to there, they'll be to Road 24 and we should be able to go ahead and open up Granada Drive. Right now, I believe council knows that Granada Drive is limited to one lane each direction. We, we are keeping traffic off of the south side of the road until we're able to go ahead and get to a, an opinion that is safe for traffic to be on the south side of the road. We're, we're a little bit concerned that there might be voids underneath. We did have what's called a ground penetrating radar out there today, moving along the road, looking for any evidence of, of voids underneath the pavement.
Okay, thank you, City Engineer. A great report. And thanks staff for working so hard on this project. I know Ellen and City Manager were out there late at that first shot that got put in. Pretty exciting for them to see. So I know they do it at night, so I'm hoping to be there for that second shot. I'll bring it back to my colleagues. Any questions? I don't see any. Open up to public comment. Okay, any comment online or on Zoom?
We have none.
Your pro tem. Thank you, City Clerk Gonzalez. I close public comment. With that, I'd like to entertain a motion from my colleagues.
To adopt D1 too?
Yes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much for that update.
Thank you.
Moving on to E, Administrative Reports, E1, Requesting for Direction on Developing an Alternate Method for Placing Items on the City Council Agenda, City Clerk Gonzalez.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and council members. One moment while I pull up the presentation. Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. Tonight, the item before you is Request for Direction on Developing Alternative Methods for Placing Items on the City Council Agenda. During its regular meeting on July 3, council instructed staff to schedule a discussion on developing an alternative method for the placement of items on the council agenda by council. Today, staff in consultation with the city attorney place items on the council agenda for council consideration. As an alternative, council may request that items be added at a future council meeting by a majority thumbs up method by council members during council reports. The current process was established in early 2019. While this system was designed to be simple and efficient, concerns have been raised about its effectiveness and lack of clarity. The council seeks to explore a more structured approach to ensure all relevant matters are considered appropriately. The current process for adding items by council members to a future council agenda involves an informal thumbs up method by the majority of council members. This method has been used by the council to gauge preliminary support for placing items on the agenda. And while this system was designed to be simple and efficient, concerns have been raised about regarding its effectiveness and fairness. So this evening, this items presented to council to provide staff direction on a preferred alternative, on preferred alternatives to ensure a more structured and transparent approach to setting the agenda. Thank you.
All right, that's an introduction to my colleagues. Any questions from my fellow city council members?
I guess my question would be to legal counsel. So, I mean, what, what are, I know it's, it's informal, right? But to have a more structured method, I guess we can escalate appropriately. I mean, in the past, what we've done is we have our, our buttons up here. And when the question is asked, you hit the button and that's a generally an affirmative, right? The other thing that I'm thinking that maybe, I don't know if it would be even appropriate or legal to maybe do like an informal poll where the rest of the council is not aware of what each other are saying, but we send it either to City Clerk or legal counsel. I mean, I'm, I'm just asking because I don't know legality of that. That's why you're here.
Thank you. I, I can tell you're brainstorming and looking at options here. So currently, your rules provide that any member of the city council may request an item to be put on the agenda. And it says that if there is a majority agreement by the council, it is to be placed on there. So one of the problems that we have, and it's usually attorneys sitting around late at night around the campfire figuring out how to do this, is that you, a council cannot take official action on an item that's not on the agenda. Well, you don't know what's going to be added to the agenda at the time the agenda is published because of something that's going to be in the future. So there's one train of thought that says the more official or formal you make it, the more there's an argument that you're taking official action. Now, there's another school of attorneys, sorry to give you the it's depends statement, that says it doesn't matter whether you do by thumbs up or you do by written vote or whatever you do it, whatever mechanism, as long as it's open, transparent and fair, and as long as there's no discussion as to the underlying item, you can go ahead and put it on. It's up to the city council. Now, the only caveat to that is, is it can't be a secret vote. In other words, it has to be something public, it has to be something known. So my personal perspective, and again, this is, I'm in the second camp that's sitting around, that says as long as you don't discuss it and as long as you come up with a reasonable mechanism that the majority of the council can agree on, whether it's a thumbs up, whether it's waving in the air, whether it's pushing buttons, all those work. I'm a little bit leery about a formal vote, calling it yay nay sort of thing, but I think we can live with that and make arguments. So the world is your oyster as to what you want to do.
And I guess my second question would be, so, you know, setting out that process, obviously, we're not allowed to discuss, but you know, sometimes the process can lend itself to, I don't want to say quasi discussion, but then you're, you know, you appear kind of prompting or, you know, and so then that becomes more of a, you know, okay, you're giving your opinion on, on, on something, which doesn't necessarily, just because you're in favor of something, doesn't necessarily mean that you wanted on the agenda at this time. Right, there, there's a bunch of different things. And just for fairness and efficiency, you know, I think that there should be, I don't know, I don't even know, like a time limit or something. But, so that's another concern, right, where it's not necessarily outright discussion, but kind of, right?
And there's, there's an implied question in there, and I hope you don't mind if I jump in. And that is, the real easy way to tell if you're starting to go the wrong way is to see how much your attorney is squirmy. So the general rule of thumb is if you're asking for clarification as to what is being put in or the scope of it, and if somebody says, you know, I'd be interested in A and B, but not C, I'd support that if that's being put on. You're generally okay. If you're saying, I'm against C, I'll never vote for C because of X, Y, and Z, that's where the line crosses. So the councils have to be careful to do that. One rule of thumb I use, 30 second questions, clarifications, you're good to go. Once somebody's talking for more than a minute, that's when you start to get into the flags going up and it becomes more of a discussion rather than a discussion of the underlying item rather than, hey, we'd just like to bring up this principle in general. That being said, sometimes staff need additional clarification as to what's going on the agenda. And those are, you know, fair questions for staff to ask for clarification. And then the council should be, is there still a majority based on what's been described? Give a nod, thumbs up, push a button. Then you're okay. Does that make sense?
So I think it has to be something that's being put in writing because originally before the thumbs up, it was the buttons. So we were pushing buttons and then we were being called on and we're like, we're not pushing a button to be called on, pushing a button, saying that we are for this issue. We have feedback? Or somebody?
And does someone have the speaker on? Excuse me, Gabriel, is your speaker on? Okay. I believe your speaker was on. So come, come, we were getting feedback from your phone. So can you please turn off the volume on your phone? Thank you.
So if we have it in writing saying that we're pushing buttons when somebody proposes something to be put on the agenda and we push buttons, the person who is sitting in the chair, Mayor Protem or mayor or whoever is the mayor Protem at the time, knows that these are the rules that when somebody is motioning to put it on the agenda, the, the buttons are, I'm in favor of. And that person who's at this chair would say to who, staff or city manager, city clerk, the majority said, we have a four, and there's, well, like, there's only four of us. Let's say there's a three one, then she would know that it would be put on the agenda because majority of three one is there. And again, you've mentioned the 30 seconds because we have seen it in council where it's a minute and somebody's trying to prompt other people, but we've already made decisions and it, they keep pushing for what they want and not what's best.
You're concerned about it tipping into the argument-
Yes.
Rather than, is there a majority yes, no?
Yes.
So absolutely. And that starts to get a little bit dicey sometimes. I'll tell you, having sat here a couple of times, not that we've ever been close, but there have been times that it would have been, it would be good to move things along. The one concern I do have about the using the button approaches, you can use it, but at the end of the day, it must be announced who voted what. So if it's orally, people can visually see who did it. So if they said, okay, it looks like there's a three, two vote, you don't need to identify the council members who voted three and two, because people should be able to tell by the mouth moving and the oral sound coming out. That's fine. On the buttons, unless they are displayed somewhere, either on the monitor or in the room where everybody can observe them, the mayor or chair would have to announce out who voted for and against placing the item on the agenda. So it just needs to be a public vote or public determination so everybody can see who's doing what.
That's interesting because in the past, it's never been said. Cause I've been on here the longest for eight years. And before we had any of these council members, it was never announced to push buttons. It would just say, you know, six, one, it passes.
The safer approach is to say six to one with council member so and so voting no, it passes.
Okay.
And again, the reason for that is the public transparency issue. And it also, people will be like, well, who voted for what or for who in order to put it on? And I recognize you're going to see where those votes are later, as the item comes before the city council, right? And you're going to be able to tell that. And in reality, if, let's say the chair was mistaken in the vote, that there really was a majority of four people and said that there wasn't, that was only two, it's like, oh, it doesn't pass. The, any person up here can say, well, hey, I want a roll call vote or could identify the people. And then that process is triggered then. But if you do want to make changes, could I recommend doing an edit to your policy to make it clearer? That way, that if you have four people voting. So if you wanted to even require a policy that said, hey, everybody get your list together and provide it to the city manager ahead of the meeting. And then the city manager could even go down and say, I have four items on the list, item one, item two, item three, item four, additional clarification from council member so and so. That's an option. Or you could keep on doing what you're doing. Like I said, you've got a lot of options.
I think it needs to be in our policies because we're not all going to be here, you know, who knows five years, 10 years down the line. And when it's laid out, it's laid out for future council members. I just think it's best for that. I'll give my colleagues a minute to see, to think. Will I open it up for public comment? I see none. How about on Zoom or online?
No one on Zoom and no written public comment.
Thank you, City Clerk Gonzalez. I bring it back to my colleagues for some clarification or a motion. Councilwoman Mejia.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Gallegos. It's, I feel like in a naive world, you know, we would all be doing our homework, come here and ready to discuss and, and make decisions. I don't know about, I understand the principles and I don't know if it's necessarily the method or what you can do. If you can have words verbally, I mean, policies verbally in writing, and if they're just not being followed and enforced, it kind of really has no, it doesn't really make sense. It has to be enforced. I'm wondering if it would be possible to put a time limit on, on the discussion and have it displaced and then a time limit on, you know, now we're going to take the vote and you have five seconds to vote. I don't know, something like that. Is that possible?
Absolutely. So for example, if you, and I'm just tossing something out, if you wanted to have a list to the city manager, the city manager could say, we have a vote to install a water park in City Hall. Not a vote, a council member so and so would like to install a water park at City Hall, council member so and so, you have, you know, 30 seconds or 60 seconds to describe what you're proposing. And then you could have a minute or two for any clarification and you could have it wrapped up in a three minute time limit like you do for speakers, for example. So all of it has to be done. And if it's not enough for, at that point, you call for the vote as to whether or not you want to place it on the agenda for additional discussion. That way you have the introduction, council member gets an opportunity to explain, you have an opportunity for clarifying questions and a vote, and you also have in cap, so it doesn't go on for a long time.
I mean, it's three minutes.
It's a long time.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
You can do two minutes. You could do 60 seconds. I will caution you, having been at, you know, one or two council meetings, not in this jurisdiction, but in other places as well, I've seen legitimately items go past 60 seconds just because there needs to be clarifications as to scope. And I've found some council members can speak more succinctly than other council members. Again, not a reflection on this council.
Right. Yeah, I, I think that, that, that should be considered. And, and I do- and I do understand your concern about weaponizing votes. One of the reasons why I ran for city council was I wanted to, you know, become educated, educate my community. And I think that it is a disservice if we're not having these conversations with people beforehand and just misleading them. It's it's not right. So I definitely see what you're saying, but at the same time, we do want to be 100% transparent. Thank you.
So I'm going with the council member Mejia's suggestion to have a time limit and he said a displayed vote?
Well, he said, a city attorney said you have to display it in some kind of way.
You could announce, you said you could announce it, right? It's a three, two.
It's a three, two vote with so and so and so so voting no. Or you could even have the lights on the front counter. So when they lit up, they'd also light up here. And as long as they're visible to the public and you could see who it is and they're just in order, or you could even have the lights in front of each one of the the members. So as they popped up, you know, a green light or red light, however you want to do it.
So I think it'd be easier, I mean, because then you'd have to reconfigure everything up here. So the time limit, we use these buttons, but then it is announced, right? So it was a three, two and so and so voted yes, no. That way we don't have to put lights on the front. I mean, we can see them, right? We would, it would be our responsibility to announce and then it would be our responsibility as the council to police each other, I guess. I mean, or to say, hey, that's out of line, out of order if we start veering into that territory. But I think having that time limit, having that process, I think it's going to help streamline getting things on on the agenda, in my opinion, and not.
Are you saying, my colleagues saying that they would want to, before the council meeting, give those names to the city manager who will list them off one by one and we vote and have discussions?
Like a list of the agenda items you want to add to the.
You want to pull at city hall, number one, number.
So it'd have to be before the council meeting. So it'd actually be on the agenda. Is that what you're saying?
No.
It wouldn't be on the agenda. You'd just write a list, give it to the city manager. The only problem is that sometimes stuff comes up during the meeting.
Yes, that's true.
So that would probably, you know, half your stuff would probably be listed to the city manager, but sometimes you have stuff coming up in the meeting and everybody looks around and says, oh, we should put this on the agenda.
But then you could just put it on at the next meeting. And we'll have, I hope we'll have another meeting at some point, right? I mean, you're talking about that most of two, two to three weeks delay.
Yes, that's correct. If obviously if council, if it's submitted, I'll say submitted late, and I don't know what late means. Because council hasn't defined what late means, but.
The council meeting starts.
Yeah, at some point you would want to have some kind of time limit. And then at that point, if it's not in during that council meeting, it would just be brought back to the two weeks later or the next council meeting. And then it would all say first in line, not the next council meeting. It'd be the first one read, assuming there wasn't one before.
So so to be clear, under that process, if something came up in the middle of the meeting, city, give it to the city manager, he would then put it on the agenda to consider putting it on the agenda at the next meeting. So it'd be delayed by almost a month
Yeah.
on regular meeting times.
That's too long.
That's too long. It's too long.
So if, again, you're, go ahead.
So just one thought. Could a potential option be that that council separates admin reports versus placing items on an agenda? And the reason I say that is if I'm hearing council correctly, this evening, one of the issues is if a council member is speaking for a very long time during admin reports and then says, I'd like to place this on the agenda. Hypothetically, could a council separate the two items, you go through admin reports? And then when it's your turn, we have a completely different section on the agenda. It would be section, it would be a new section G.
G and then H.
And section E, G would be future council action items. And then council members at that point can introduce something, but there would be a time limit. There would be some kind of time limit. And I'm saying that because council was discussing the time limit, not that I'm advocating for a time limit. But then council couldn't there he put a time limit. However, there's still a self enforcement component to this because a council member could say what they'd like to during subsection F or during section F, during admin reports, and then just come back and say, I want to add it.
Add to the agenda.
So so some of it is 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 going back to, I think, what council member Mejia said, some of it, it's self, it's self regulating. And I think it was council member Mejia that said that.
And with regards to the self regulating issue, even though a lot of stuff in the rule, there are in the rules, the chair has a certain amount of discretion to vary those rules unless a majority of the council says we want to enforce these rules. So I hesitate to say that they're more guidelines because they're not mayor guidelines, but there is a certain amount of inherent discretion in certain items.
But if it's put in our policy, it would just be across the board, wouldn't it?
It, in theory, it'd be across the board, but in any time, a majority of the city council could set that policy aside.
Say, I want to have more time.
And if a majority agreed, they could set aside that policy.
You have to make a motion within the 60 seconds.
Exactly. So do we have a time that we want to give direction to on that motion?
The 60, I mean, I guess if if it's not enough, we can can always change it, right? Change it now.
So Mayor Protem, if I may, as I'm thinking about it further, if the question is timing, going back to what I said a few minutes ago, which I thought was a smart idea, I'm going to amend that idea because it wasn't as smart as I thought it was. One, one potential option is to retitle section E on your agenda to call it future action items or future agenda items, place a time limit on that if council wishes. And then reclassify section G for admin reports.
To reverse the order so.
You reverse order.
Report time.
If if that's the issue that council wants to address, of course.
Sounds like that would be a good.
That's, I'm okay with that.
So just for the clarification here, my understanding is, is you want to formally amend your policy, which means we'll come back. You would like staff to propose something where there is a new section in the agenda that where the agenda items for future agenda items would come before council member reports, be a separate item, that there would be some sort of time limit, preliminarily, you mentioned 60 seconds, 120 seconds, 90, I don't know where you're at. But we could propose a various range of time items for that, if that's a concern. And then whether or not to use the buttons and if they're not functional to do some sort of other way of indicating your vote. Does that sound a backup plan? Does that sound good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. So do I have a motion for what Shannon?
A motion on this day?
You can do a motion, you can give me thumbs up, anything works.
So we're good.
But the thing is, it won't be adopted, even if we, if we make a motion today, it won't be adopted.
That is correct because it's merely direction to put us on the agenda for the next meeting. And because it's not in the policy yet, you can still do the thumbs up. Okay, yes, I stay up late at night thinking about these sorts of things.
Okay, thank you for that. We're moving on to F, council member reports announcements and future agenda items, probably for the last time. This portion of the meeting is reserved for mayor and council members to make brief reports on boards, committees and other public agencies and at public events to request updates, to initiate future agenda items and to take action on matters initiated under this section of the agenda. Under this section, the council may have take action only on items specifically agenda eyes and which meet other requirements for action. Councilmember Montez.
Oh, I just want to say thank you to staff. I know there's been a lot of issues kind of happening lately. And I do want to, my thoughts and prayers to the families that have been affected by it. I do feel like, you know, the community council, we do have an obligation to try to mitigate some of these impacts, especially to our youth. I'm going to try to talk to chief and see what what measures we can come up with to see how to mitigate that. I know we have other partners in the community that can help out with that, but that's something that, you know, again, just my, you know, thoughts and prayers goes out to the family, no matter what, still lives that were impacted, no matter what they were doing, right? I don't know if on a, on a more positive note, I attended the National Alliance and Homelessness Conference in DC last week. Doing a bunch of stuff. And there are some changes there, you know, are probably coming, well, they are coming, the Supreme Court decisions. And I think that, you know, it's a complicated issue. I think at the end of the day, everybody does want an end to homelessness. How we get there is going to depend on the particular community. And I would just say, let's all continue to keep working on to that end, to end homelessness. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Councilman Montez, especially representing us in DC. Councilwoman Mejia.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Gallegos. Last Thursday, I was invited to the Youth Leadership Academy in Visalia by supervisor Eddie Valero. I got the opportunity to speak to youth along with council members from Visalia, Bakersfield and Fresno. It was very exciting to be there and see the young people that are going to replace us in these leadership, leadership positions. And I've also been invited to another youth youth event where they're going to learn about political engagement later this month in Madera. So very exciting to see local youth in Madera becoming interested in being a part of the process. I'd like to thank the City of Madera Parks and Community Services Department again for all of their patient, all of their patience and all of their guidance and getting through processes for upcoming events and congratulate them on all of the wonderful opportunities that we have going on for youth. On July 29th, they're going to have an event at the John W. Wells Youth Center where they're going to give away free helmets for young kids. And that's going to be from 11:00 in the morning to 12:30 PM. So make sure you go out there and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Mejia. Councilmember Venegas.
Vicente, please.
Surely.
No, nothing to report at this time.
Okay, thank you. I would like to thank our staff. We had our first Citizen Academy in probably eight years. Good turnout, good conversations. They're all jazzed up, a very good group. And they will be with our staff for eight weeks. So thank you for that, for putting that together. We have a lot happening this week. We have a hospital meeting that will be happening on Thursday. And we have our swearing in of our brand new police officers. So looking forward to have them meet the rest of this community this week. With that, I thank everybody for sharing their evening with us tonight and those that hung out to the end. And we have no closed session items. With that, I adjourn this meeting at 7:22. Our next meeting will be August 7th, 2024. See you then. Thank you, everyone.